There's, it's not.
Good evening and thank you for joining us for the Select Board meeting of March ninth. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand by. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four.
Good evening and thank you for joining us for the Select Board meeting of March ninth. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us. We had the budget presentation last week and tonight we're having some of the department heads come in and present some of the changes that they're having and the Select Board can ask some questions. Mark Gold is not available. Richard Foster, we're expecting Tom soon, so we're going to go ahead and start since it's informational meeting rather than a, will be doing any votes. Did you have any announcements?
One? No.
And I did speak to the other Select Board members about us possibly going remote participation today, but we're going to, according to our attorney, they requested that we wait until next one, this Wednesday, to vote that in, so it is posted on the agenda. So we will discuss that on Wednesday before we begin our meeting. And Wednesday, we have the public forum on the budget. And what time is that, Lynn?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty. So come here or send us your questions on the budget. We'll be having the forum after we have a joint meeting with Finance here. And you said no announcements, Lynn?
No.
Okay. Any announcements or comments? And I don't think we have any public comments. There's no one here, so we'll get right to it. Lynn, did you want to say anything about the budget or just introduce your department heads?
First up, we have Jim Leiden, Director of the Adult Center and Council on Aging, and he's here to answer any questions you may have on the Adult Center budget.
Okay, hello, welcome. And this is an exciting year for you with the very new Adult Center opening up and there were some changes to your budget. Do you want to, just so the residents can hear some of the highlights or changes you've put into the budget?
Well, I tried to keep it pretty much level funded. That was the message that I did receive. I did put in a couple requests, but after speaking with Lynn and Paul about some of the things going forward, I decided to basically just keep it level funded for this year and then seeing how everything plays out going forward with the new facility, kind of get a better sense of where we stand operationally. So I think going forward, we have some strong things in place. We've been talking about a lot of different things when it comes to the new building, potentially staff, fee structures and those types of things. But for right now, the recommendation was to kind of keep everything level funded.
So there are no increase in hours or part timers or anything like that to prepare for the opening?
I did put those things in, but the more that we talked about it, we just kind of wanted to get a sense of where we stood, you know, into the year. And then if there was, you know, a need for that, then maybe it would be presented for next year's budget. Or there might also be ways that we could incorporate those things mid-year based on some of our accounts that we have that require fees and those types of things.
So you think you might be able to build those in later during the year?
Yeah, so we're going to continue to monitor it and look at it. And once we get a projected opening date, we'll have a better idea of when that may be. And if we need to make adjustments, we will. But we're still planning for business as usual once they move into the new space. And then we'll discuss, you know, extended hours or increase in programming.
And the other thing that Jim had asked for, quite honestly, were, you know, obviously the upkeep and maintenance in and around the building. And as the town manager's budget includes, there are two new positions, a grounds person for the outside and another custodian that were added. And the custodian specifically added for the council on aging to do the inner work and the grounds as a part of all the demands on the grounds work that Wolf Swamp, that was added there. So that was requested. It was just moved out of his budget. But again, it was funded that we take care of those.
Oh, so it has those positions happen?
But they are in the DPW.
Oh, they're in the DPW. And would those, that janitorial extra hours help set up within the, or is this only for grounds?
There's one in each. There's a custodian and a grounds person.
So during the day, if you needed help setting up tables or moving things, you would have assistance?
I would hope so. Yeah, I would talk to Mario at the DPW about the responsibilities exactly. Obviously, it'd be great to have some cleaning as a top priority, but there is also going to be a lot of program setup and breakdown. So ideally, if that was into the position, job description and duties, that would be ideal. As of right now, you know, we do a lot of changing of rooms, a lot of breaking downs of tables, setting things up. And, you know, we're able to do it, but, you know, we're going to have definitely some bigger and better kinds of programs as we go forward that will require additional setup and those types of things. So hopefully, that is the case with the position.
Well, I know I've heard from the COA, they're really concerned about being able to expand programming with the new building. Do you feel that you'll have any problems with that?
I don't foresee any issues expanding programming. I'm pretty confident in our programming roster right now. I think we're going to transition very nicely into the new building with what we have, but the possibilities are really going to open up once we get in there to really examine the space. You know, then if there's a talk about extended hours or those types of things, then we could really, you know, grow the programming. But right now, I'm pleased with our programming direction. Like I said, I think it'll be a smooth transition into the building, but then as we get in, I think the programming will evolve, you know, whether that is part and into the evening or however it is we do it because we're going to have space within the gym with some of the other rooms within the building. So the possibilities are really exciting and I think we have a lot of opportunity for continued growth.
Mark, Tom, did you have any questions for Jim in regards to his budget?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that. I think I followed it. But so the plan is a plan right now to kind of keep everything status quo, moving personnel and programming from the existing building into the new building.
Correct.
And then once you're in, determining how you're going to use those extra, I guess, after hours.
Exactly. Yeah, I think like right now, we're set up to take our operation right now currently at the center, move it into the new facility with our current staff, our current programming, kind of get everything in place within the facility, and then really be able to analyze where there's opportunities for additional programming and potentially additional hours or additional staff and those types of things. So, you know, we've kind of been talking about a few different ideas as far as with Lynn, with the town, with my staff, even with our participants, some of the needs and expectations of the new facility. So I think this is the right way to go about it. It's really kind of get a feel for how the building is, what type of traffic we're going to be getting. We expect it's going to be very, very busy early on. Typically, when a new center is built, the numbers triple within the first six months to a year. The goal after that is to retain those people so that your numbers potentially double and then they stay. So I think we have a really good handle on what it is that we're doing programming wise and service wise too. But it's, some of it's like we have to see how everything evolves to really have a good sense of extra hours and extra staffing and those types of things.
Good. I think the other thing too is, was it a year or so ago, we already had increased the, your program coordinators?
Correct.
Position in anticipation of this opening. So there was some added money that was, I think it was in the following, this fiscal year being started. So in anticipation of that, the new council on aging opening, there was additional hours already built into the budget for some of the additional program that would take place upon opening.
Right. Yeah, and that's made a big difference over the past year. I think our average daily attendance has increased by about thirty percent over the past year because of those extra hours. The new staff person's been able to add additional programming throughout the course of the day and then even been able to continue to offer some evening programs. So those hours have made a really big impact in the current facility. And then as we go forward in the new building, we expect our programming to grow as well.
Tom, any questions?
Well, yeah, I mean, in the budget, everything looked in order. The only difference was like with postage or something. But are you planning to do a mailer, like with the opening of the new senior?
We've been talking about putting together like a survey over the next couple of months to get a sense of certain things that maybe some of the older adults in the town specifically would like, kind of get a sense of if they're happy with our programming, if they're, if they're pleased with our hours, if they'd like to see them possibly expand. Just to kind of get a sense of the age group that is currently attending. I mean, we have a pretty good sense, but in the new building, maybe some of the seniors in the community that we're not reaching, we'd probably like to hear their voice about some things that they would like to see. So we think a survey is going to be pretty important to tell us going into the new building, you know, kind of the age range that, you know, might appeal for certain programs, certain services. I mean, we have an idea right now that we're serving people anywhere from, you know, late fifties all the way up into late nineties, even in the hundreds. Just really trying to fine tune some of our programs and services to really understand the community as a whole when it comes to our whole operation.
Yeah, I think that, you know, just doing a survey also gives you an opportunity to get people to be aware of all the different activities that you do have. And, you know, with the new center, there's a possibility you could get some of the folks on the, you know, fifty, sixty, some of the lower end people to see some of the activities and help them feel, feel welcome in the adult center, you know, so.
Yeah, we expect to reach those, the seniors that, you know, maybe for whatever reason, don't come to the center now, whether it's the building itself, whether they're busy working, whether they have other obligations. We think just the new building and the excitement alone is going to draw people to the facility. So we're expecting that. We talk about that a lot. I think, again, we have a good plan kind of in place when it comes to transitioning our programming into the new building, but then really expect that wave of seniors to come, you know, from this town and other towns too. I think we're, you know, it's going to be pretty obvious that we're going to have a premier senior center within the area and the region that a lot of people are going to want to see what it is that we have to offer. So we're kind of expecting, we're expecting pretty big things.
Is there anything that we're going to be offering that is different than other communities?
Well, I think the gymnasium and the walking track and the pickleball courts inside along with the ability to play basketball, having a big multipurpose room, wide open welcoming center. I mean, I think it's going to be head and shoulders of, from, obviously from what we have. But, you know, there are a lot of other newer centers that are popping up in the area too. So, you know, there's, there's competition between centers, but we're also kind of doing the same kind of work and we all kind of work together to bring people into our communities. But I would say the standout thing is obviously the gymnasium.
Great, yeah. All right, thank you.
Which brings up a question. If you're not expanding, are you going to have evening hours for the gymnasium? How are you going to do that?
Those are kind of some discussions that we've been having. There hasn't been anything confirmed down about that. We think that the expectation is that people are going to want to use the gym in the mornings, possibly in the evenings. You know, I've already been fielding questions, are you going to be open on the weekends? So we've been having an open dialogue about all those things, but we really haven't nailed anything down exactly yet.
Lynn, is there going to be flexibility, like if January, we decide we want to expand some evening hours?
Yes, yes, yeah. And like Jim was saying, we've been having communications about that and we're going to develop a plan so that we're ready to go when we hit the ground, but then also recognizing that we need to be somewhat flexible to see what the population wants and what the demand for the space is going to be.
And Jim, I want to thank you. You're part of this task force that has met for several weeks in regards to the coronavirus and the approach the town manager is taking. And I know other department heads in the room have also been involved. So I want to thank you very much and appreciate the extra time and work you've put into it. What I've seen so far, I think you're putting together a very good plan. So thank you very much. Because you have the vulnerable population down there that...
Yeah, happy to be part of it. Yeah, we feel like, you know, obviously it's an important issue and you're right, we do work with a very vulnerable population and we take into consideration a lot of the things that are going on. So we just want to be prepared.
So thank you very much for that, on top of all the work in the budget.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions for Jim? Yeah, all right, thank you.
All right, thanks a lot.
And while I'm thanking people, Lynn, I have to tell you, I know this budget was difficult. You were in the middle of, just came on board and you had to tie together this budget and work with all the department heads. So I want to thank the department heads and you for the fine work in getting what I think is a very nicely put together budget. So thank you and thank you everyone, it's here or not here, from the department heads. Who did you want to bring on next on?
Next, we have six fifteen. We have Parks and Recreation. So we have the Director of Parks and Recreation, Barry Jarvis, here to answer any questions that you have about the Parks and Recreation budget.
And so far, we're staying on time. It's six fifteen. So you want to tell us any highlights on your budget or changes?
So for the most part, the general fund budget is very similar to what it has been, to what it has been in past years. With the revolving budget, we are proposing an addition of a therapeutic rec specialist to help us with our special populations. That's a part-time position and it would come out of revolving, so it wouldn't have any impact on the general fund. We have projections for the two pieces of revenue that are part of the general fund, passports, and the building rentals and passports are very steady. They're a steady stream of income to the general fund. The rentals, not so much. We saw two of our more consistent renters find other places to rent, so we've lost them. So we're still seeking replacements for that. And that's the community house primarily.
Any questions for Barry? Could you tell us a little bit more about this position and are there new programs you're putting in for?
Some new programs, more existing programs and how to incorporate special populations into our, into our regular programs, whether it's sports, whether it's daycare. So this would be, and it's primarily youth, so it would be children perhaps with autism, with really any disability. And this person would be a certified professional recreation, therapeutic recreation specialist. And they would help us integrate different, whether it's adding materials or whether it's training to work with special populations into our programs.
Wow, that would be wonderful.
And then some new programs that we're working on.
Well, that's great. So I'm very excited about that. Was there something you're hoping to do in the future you couldn't quite do this year? Because I know we had a tight budget with our, our tax ceiling cap.
In general?
Future dreams?
Not yet. And I think primarily because most of our programs are funded through the Recreation Revolving Fund, not the General Fund. So as far as what we have in the General Fund, it's very little compared to the rest of our revolving budget. We did see the daycare line item was reduced, but that reflects current staffing, so I don't anticipate that being an issue. But we really didn't see any reductions on the General Fund side. And that's because most of our, our business is done through the recreation side, or the revolving side.
Well, you must be excited about the new groundskeeper.
I am.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think that'll help. And I think one of the focus, I mean, it is tied into the budget, but one of the focuses that our department has for the upcoming fiscal year is looking at our strategic plans and revamping them, working with the Park Board. We are in the process of our open space and recreation plan, the update from 2012. So you probably all received the survey and hopefully completed the survey. And the next piece of that is the public forum, which will be in a couple of weeks. So we're working on that. And I'm assuming projects will come from that plan. We're also working with the Park Board and kind of redefining our strategic plan and what we're looking at in terms of facility and fields. And there's a lot of work obviously being done, not just with Wolf Swamp, but even driving through town tonight, you might notice that the two baseball fields at Bliss Park, and that's a credit to the DPW, solely to the DPW, because they're, they're doing that, but also the field at Glenbrook. So we are taking on some of these larger projects in-house through collaboration, which is great.
That's wonderful.
Yes. And the spring weather is certainly helping with a lot of that.
Did you want to give a pitch on when your public forum is? Do you have a place and a date yet?
It is here in the high school here, to the home viewers who might not mean anything, but it is, it's in a couple of weeks. So it is Tuesday, it is March thirty first. It's here in the Building and Technology Center. It is at seven PM and we're hoping people attend if they have any interest in anything related to open space in Long Meadow or recreation in general. And if not, they can always share comments through the survey process if they can attend the meeting.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I just had a question. Now, the therapeutic recreation person, would that give you an opportunity to expand the number of people who are coming to use the center during the day or offer like early education intervention programs?
I would imagine it would. We've done some collaboration with the school department, particularly the pupil services division, and identified common needs. We do that in the summer for camp. We do it a little bit in, during the school year because we do share an audience. And we actually, we had a meeting with a stakeholder meeting maybe a couple of months ago and we identified this, perhaps some of our deficits in our programming. So I see it as an opportunity to enhance the programs we have and be more inclusive, but also add programs. And that would, that would be with the new TR, therapeutic recreation person, bringing that programming in. We can do that in existing facilities. It could be events. It doesn't have to be just programming. And it could be any audience. We serve infants to sixth grade. So I could see that being inclusive of that whole age group.
Yeah, because, I mean, with the increase of autism in our society, parents are always looking for options. And so I know there's regional groups like Autism Connections that are always, would want to be aware of any program that parents could come to. And, because you don't have to be a town resident or something like this.
No. And our schools do such an excellent job with the services they provide, but we typically operate out of school time. So we're looking to expand programming.
Right, yeah. So there wouldn't be any evening programs?
Oh, I would anticipate there would be.
There will be?
Yes, any out of school time. So that, to me, that's before school, after school, weekends, evenings, all of that, yes.
Sounds good.
It does. It's exciting.
And so I have a question. Would this also include your camps? So will you could accommodate a child with autism if they had a one-on-one aid or something like that?
We do. It would and we do. So currently, for the summer programs, we collaborate with the school department directly. And they have their clientele that they deal with year round. And many of those children wind up going to camp at Greenwood with our campers. And they do provide one-on-one.
Oh, okay. So you provide that already?
We do that already.
Oh, that's wonderful.
So it's nice to have the opportunity to expand that during the school year for recreation.
Yeah, great. Any other questions for Barry?
Thanks, Barry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This gives more time for Mario.
Usually save the best for last, but not today.
And I have a whole list of questions from Mark Gold, so this might take me a while.
Ah, that's too bad.
You thought it'd be easier.
No, I knew it wasn't going to be easy. So I guess we're just going to start like Barry. General fund, you know, it's pretty level funded except for a couple of different things. Two new employees are proposed, some increases in field maintenance for Wolf Swamp and Glenbrook. And then otherwise, it's pretty much level funded. There's some increases in water and that's mostly due to the rates from Water Sewer Commission. There's an increase in sewer for the same reason. There's also some debt that comes on to the tune of like a hundred thousand. And then the biggest, not the biggest, but the other enterprise fund, stormwater, also has MS four requirements this year that we budgeted for. And there's some increases there. So with that, I'll turn it over to you guys.
I think the other, the recycling pickup.
Oh, thank you. There's another big increase. So we're negotiating a new contract for hauling. We settled one for disposal. And the one other thing that hasn't changed since I've been here is we signed a new contract with the MRF and the price has gone way up. And we now have to budget for them to take our material. So big, big, expensive proposition.
So let me break that down for people to understand. You're talking about hauling, picking up.
Right.
Where you're talking about disposing it, where that, there's increases on both those ends.
Correct.
And then up till now, we were making money on the recyclables.
Right.
And the markets collapsed.
Right, not even paying, right. Sometimes we made money, sometimes we broke even. Now we're paying for them to take it.
Yeah, so that's a big concern we have, not just this year, but going forward as we look about our general fund hitting the ceiling.
Right.
And I think that's one of the discussions we're having. When are we going to have to start charging for garbage pickup that we are not doing now? I know people got really upset with the minis, but that might just be foreshadowing what we're facing. So that's your biggest budget hit, is the garbage hauling, disposal and recyclers?
I would think the water and sewer, recycling, and MS four is smaller. So that's the smallest of them. I mean, the new employees, when you add them all together, it's pretty close if you're going to add in benefits, so.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll let Mark's questions be last. So any questions for Mark? Yeah.
Okay, well, yeah, with the recycling, so it looks like we're going to budget. Okay, well, now with the recycling, so it looks like we're going to budget $150,000.
Right.
And is that mostly because of the plastics that they don't want? I mean, paper, do they still?
They take them both.
Yeah, but I mean, is there any return on paper or?
Honestly, I don't know the market for each. I don't know if anybody else has a sense of that.
Okay.
But in general, I think China used to take a lot of recycling stuff.
Okay.
And they don't, and they, they haven't been for a while.
Yeah.
That's not just a coronavirus problem, that's, goes back. The contract for the Murph expired, and so they're negotiating new prices with their distributors.
Yeah.
And they're all going up, and so now we're paying.
Now, one of the things that a lot of people throw away is, you know, vegetable peelings and, and, you know, onion skins and all these kinds of, and organic material that could be composted.
Yeah.
And it's all heavy. I mean, a lot of times that's the heaviest part of the trash. You know, you can't recycle. But you could compost everything that isn't animal byproducts and so forth.
We have bins, we, we sell at DPW, so.
Would it ever be the town's advantage to offer free composting bins to people in a way to reduce trash?
I don't know that answer, Tom. It's interesting idea.
Because if we bought them, we might even be able to get a grant to pay for those. Because I know I, I recycle quite a bit. You know, it seems like every couple of days I'm hauling stuff out to put.
We do get some grant money for, and we do buy some bins with it. I don't know that we could ever do the town.
Because we were able to get money for new garbage cans.
We did. Those were 75% paid for by a grant.
Yeah. And if we could do composting, the only thing with composting is that people don't always know how to harvest it.
Right.
You know, you need a screen. But, you know, we could even have some lessons on that. But the, I, I guess that's the only thing, as I thought about this stream of trash, is if we can compost, you know, food, food waste into our yards.
Well, certainly homeowners can do it now.
We're talking about tonnage, you know, a lot of tonnage right there. Plus, people could use it in their gardens. Now, the other thing is I know some towns will collect that. Or they have, actually, there's companies now that that's their business, is they collect that kind of food waste, and then they, they charge you to take it away. And then they give you like a couple of buckets of soil at the end of the thing. It sounds like the biggest ripoff I've ever heard of. But, you know, I, I don't know, I guess that's something I would, to think about. You know, we could do that. I mean, I, I don't know how many people would want to compost, but it would save us a lot of trouble if they did, and it would be the best thing for the environment, because we'd be sorting out all those, you know, whatever your, well, people who do cook. There are people who just pop it in the oven, they buy it already made.
Right.
But people who cook do accumulate quite a bit of food waste that could be composted, so.
Does it cost $35 for a bin?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah. Just FYI, it's $35 for a bin. You know, it's not an extraordinary amount of money.
Yeah.
It's not, but if you want like a comparative, I think the new trash barrel's like 50 bucks.
Yeah.
You knew, you knew trash barrel at home?
Yeah.
I think the town paid 50 for those.
So composting 31, and, I mean, even if they didn't harvest it, you know, they could put food in there for about two years before they started to overfill.
Before they had a problem, no.
And then, you know, we actually, it may be worth it to have a service where people would come in and, and screen all that, and then provide the soil either back to the, you know, hopefully back to the person. Everyone has land, you know, they can put around their hedges if they wanted to.
You could bring that up to recycling.
Yeah.
You could bring them in, and you could talk to them about. I know that the, the schools, I think actual organic composting is being required this year or next year by the larger institutions.
Mm-hmm.
And so we can bring it up on how to encourage local. They've also started doing scraps from the schools to send them over to the Forest Park Zoo. And so they've been trying to take the larger groups and do with that. But we'll bring it, you can mention it to recycling, we'll bring them to the meeting.
And Williams Middle School has three of those compost bins.
We have compost.
And each grade is responsible for one.
Yeah.
And I think they do the same thing. They take some leftovers from lunch, and it's like a project for them.
Yeah.
So it's a good learning experience.
And I think it would be good learning, because in the future, I, I think people should be.
Yeah, I agree.
Composting their, their food waste, you know, it would be something that we'd want to teach young people and have them see us doing it.
And the zoo will take fruits, vegetables, no onions. The animals do not like onions or garlic or anything like that.
Oh, they don't like that.
Bananas are very popular, if you have old bananas.
Oh.
In regards to the other recycling, we attended that regional meeting, and one of the things is the glass recycling. There's a problem with that now.
Right.
And some towns are forming multiple groups, getting together and buying this machine that will allow the grinding of the glass.
The grinder.
But it's a whole new world out there now with the collapse in the market.
Yeah. The only other thing is there was some savings with the snow plowing. Just, I don't know if you could mention something about that?
I don't know of any savings.
You read through your snow budget?
Yeah, well, the snow budget in general, yeah.
No.
But I mean, in terms of, we bought a plow, or we have a plow now that we used to rent. It was a reduction in terms of rentals.
A couple of years, well, maybe three or four now. We had like a trial where we leased one for the winter months.
Yeah.
No, it just, they were too small.
Okay.
It just didn't work for us, and so we ended up buying one through capital planning. And we no longer need to rent one, so it just, it works out better for us that way.
Yeah.
Frankly, going forward, that's the way I'd want to do it, so.
And, and this for, in terms of our, our snow budget, I mean, this summer's, this winter, yeah, summer, this, this summer that we called winter was pretty.
It was good winter.
I know we're not done yet.
But what I will tell you about that is, and I don't know the exact number, it's like 70 or 80,000 over. And I know that's going to surprise you, but let me tell you, just our yearly salt purchase is our budget. So the number I get, I think it's like 100, and I think we bumped it up this year to like 125. But 100,000 is usually spent just to buy salt. So, you know, in September, when I buy salt to fill the shed, money's gone. First time it snows, we're in a deficit. So, and if you remember, we didn't have a lot of storms, but we had a couple of big ones.
Yeah.
And then there was things we responded to, just, we're on a rain ice mix line, so we treated all those. Guys are still coming in, they're still getting paid, so. I know that's probably surprising you, but that's, that's the reality of it.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Any other questions for Mario?
Yeah, just, I know we've talked internally a little bit about the possibility about sourcing the, the grounds work.
Yeah.
Just wanted your opinion on, if you think that's a potential, a good idea? If it's harmful, I don't know how I feel about it.
So, we have had a problem at the high school with the maintenance of this building, the perimeter. You know, the planting beds, the mowing. And so, so much so that, you know, folks here complaining about it. And you've been here, you've been to town meeting, you've seen, it's, it's, I don't say last on our list, but field space is where we spend our time. So we went out and got quotes from a vendor. And it was, I don't remember the exact number, but it was ridiculous, to the point where I could buy, I could hire a full-time person to come here and pay their benefits. I didn't get that. I got another seasonal person for, for a few months. But that's been my experience with privatizing. I think, I don't want to speak for you, Barry, but Barry had a good idea that I would get behind in that when Wolf Swamp's done, let's spend the first year or two paying a contractor to do it. Let's see what it costs. And then let's build, you know, if it's too expensive, let's build the budget right, because it's not built right now.
Right.
This is what everybody complains about. I know how to fix it.
Mm-hmm.
We just can't afford it.
Right.
So, someone's got to give. I'd like to try it, especially for Wolf Swamp.
Mm-hmm.
Too small, you know, one field, see what it costs. If we love it and it's cheap, we'll expand it. I don't think that's going to be the case, but if I'm wrong, then we'll do it.
Right. And that'd be open to collect, you know, they would bid on that contract and.
The DPW guys? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, if you had open to contractors, would they bid on that?
Oh, yeah, of course.
That cutting, so we.
Yeah, we'd put our, um, RFP out there for.
Yeah.
Maintenance service, whoever's out there, all the landscapers would likely put in a bid, we'd take the low one, go from there.
Yeah, so you never know, we could get lucky. Probably depends on what fuel prices are too.
Right, right. Yeah, but it's a good exercise to see what the budget should be, right?
Yeah.
When do you think you would do that? So if you've got the field, field done, it's going to be done next spring?
I would think the field will be done this fall. Correct me if I'm wrong?
Two months?
No, the work itself.
Oh, the work itself, sure.
Probably this fall. I think you rest it for a full year. So maybe the fall and spring, I know that's probably, what, two years, two plus years from now, two years? That would be the year I would pay. Well, you might need people to fertilize and pesticide. We control all that other stuff, which is, you know, and mow. You're not lining, you're not doing some of the other stuff that you need to do, but, so maybe when they're done, maybe next spring is when we'd put it out, see what we get for price, and go from there.
Sounds good.
Any other questions for Mario?
No.
All right, here we go.
All right.
So Mark wants to know, DPW has nothing in the budget for the new facility.
That's incorrect.
And I assume he's talking about yours.
Yeah.
This isn't realistic. We have to, we have no increase from the $10,000 natural gas heating for the current budget.
That's new.
Is this realistic?
So we left electricity to the same. And don't forget, we're only going to be there six months if we're lucky.
Okay.
And I did add 10,000 for natural gas.
I mean, that must mean there's no increase from the 10,000.
So those are the only two things really that were of concern to me, is electric and, and natural gas.
Yeah.
I didn't touch electric, not knowing really where that was going to land. I didn't lower it either, and luckily the town management didn't lower it either. But I did add in 10 for natural gas, not knowing if that's a good, good number either. We've since reached out to Colliers, and they're going to try to give us some other like-size facilities and what their maintenance costs are, and there might be an adjustment to that at some point.
I sent it to you late this afternoon.
Okay, so. I thought it was a senior center, if I'm not mistaken, but maybe I'm wrong.
I'm sorry, it was a senior center.
And so if those numbers come in far different than what I proposed, and you guys are open to changing it, great. If not, we'll figure it out.
And you were talking about, you were going to do something with the solar possibly on the DPW. Would that be this year or the following year?
What's happening now is MVP grant applications being prepared for design and feasibility of solar. So that would just be, if awarded, it would just be to do the design in an RFP package, and we'd have to figure out how we would fund it. But, no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be likely for this budget.
Okay. Let's see. The next one is ground maintenance staff labor increase of 46,000.
Yep, that's a new employee that we just talked about.
Right. She says, I'll support some funding in the budget for DPW grounds for Wolf Swamp field maintenance, but not as full-time employees, particularly next year when we don't know if the fields will be ready. But you are now talking about actually contracting Wolf Swamp field out, and he's actually encouraging that. But you're, the extra person, the employee, is not for Wolf Swamp fields. Where were you going to put that field maintenance person?
He'll be a full-time, regular employee, who'll maintain all the fields.
All the fields.
Also, I mean, just for reference, and I think it was East Long Meadow, we reached out, maybe even Agawam, similar size acreage that they maintain. They have seven employees to do that work, we have five. We're too short, just from the start. So this is one of the two.
Is this the same person we were talking about with Parks and Rec?
Yeah.
That they would be dealing with Greenwood?
Right.
Budget section on town buildings maintenance. Let's see. An adult center, we have no idea what we're going to need. I'll agree to add funds to the budget as long as the contingent's not hiring full-time And ask, can we do the janitorial work with contract?
Of course you can.
And you're recommending an employee?
I would do an employee every day.
And you want to explain?
Why? Only because I've done this before in other places, and we have it at town buildings now, town hall, DPW, community house, I don't know about the library, police and fire, I believe, are also. We get the minimum. And in places where people aren't there at night, you don't know until the next day. You complain. I mean, community houses constantly calling, we're out of toilet paper, they're not, you know, they're, they're not even filling the, so it, it's not a great service. And I think this was better from the one we had before, and that predates me, but that's what I've heard. I, I think employees have some pride, and if they don't, get rid of them. But most of the ones I've hired come here, they want to do a good job. I know it's more expensive when you talk about benefits, not necessarily, you know, the salary piece of it. I've just had a better experience doing it that way, so.
I, I think if you spoke to any employee in any one of those buildings, they would give you their opinion on which they think is better.
We used to hear about it at the adult center, the complaints.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's pros and cons.
And I get, he's also asking, but the building won't be occupied until later, but you're starting July 1st with the janitor?
We don't have to.
No.
Budget section on water department, the current year's spending is over budget, it needs to be questioned. Do we know what these added costs are, and are they going to continue to the next year, the added expenses that have been overrun, like vehicle maintenance, communications, other expenses?
Some of those are increased, because that's just a cost of doing business. The communication line is up because our water quality was down. So every quarter that we test over, and I will tell you, this is the first quarter we had, I can't remember if it was March or February, we were under the limit, so we didn't have to send those, those notices, and I expect it to get better and maybe even stay the same. So hopefully we won't have to spend that money again in the future. Springfield Water Sewer Commission is retooling, they're putting in some new filters. And so that's not an overnight process, that's months and years, so. Fingers crossed that, that, that goes away in the future. Some of the other stuff, like the vehicle maintenance, that's, that's what it is, so. The increase to the rates we talked about, that's just a number that gets passed through from the Water Sewer Commission to the ratepayers, so.
And at this point, I want to say, you want to tell the residents about the water quality testing and the changes?
Yeah, I think Director Mazza just referred to it a little bit, but this last quarter testing came back with no contaminants that raised the level to require notices to the public.
And we're still going to follow up with a special meeting and the consultant.
Right.
Things are better now.
Yep.
The last one, stormwater utility, seems like a lot of chargers are not being put. Let's see. Are these increases justified by being MS?
Four.
Four requirements?
Yes. So MS4 is somewhat different than what we were doing, somewhat the same. We're still gonna sweep your street. We're still gonna clean your catch basin, except we're just gonna do it more. And then there's some new stuff, like your outfall, where your lakes, where your drainage runs into your lakes, ponds and streams, now have to be tested. And so you gotta do it in dry flow, which means it's like not raining, there's not a whole lot of water coming out. If you find something, a contaminant, then you gotta test it in the wet, and then if it exceeds a certain level, then you gotta start running a camera up the pipe to figure out where it's coming from. You gotta resolve it. And so these things are all new, starting this year, and so the year when, not next year. And so these are all things we're learning as we go. What I think I want to mention, and I hope you guys are okay with it, is that this is only gonna grow, I think, as the years go on. And I think we've been using this to replace infrastructure, and I think it should stay that way, i.e. Magnolia Drive, and I can't think of the second one at the moment.
Morningside.
Sorry?
Morningside?
Morningside, I think, was pre-this.
Eli?
No. It's somewhere in the south end of town. It'll come to me probably after the meeting. But anyways, the only real way, I think, to make sure that we continue to stay on pace, or maybe slightly ahead of it, is to continue to fund it this way, which means, and I know you don't want to hear this, but to do that, the fee's gonna have to continue to grow till it pays for itself.
And that is paid for by not just residents, but commercial properties and nonprofits?
It's mostly subsidized by General Fund, and Paul might know the percentage breakout, but it's, it needs to flip-flop. We need to continue to gain on what the General Fund contributes versus the ratepayers.
The Select Board has created a policy
Okay.
that I think last fiscal year, 35% of it was funded by, through fees, or I should say, this current fiscal year. FY '21, it's 42 and 1/2, and they have a goal over a number of years to hit 100% funded by fees. I think the other one that is funded through stormwater, I think, is Ponside Road, Culverts?
No, that's flat.
Flat, yep.
Federal land and...
Access program.
Access program, thank you.
Yeah, and that, again, we're hitting the tax ceiling.
Right.
And this is not included in the tax ceiling, so it's not General Fund.
It's not, but I know the residents look at it as another tax, even though it's not, and it's a fee they have to pay when they get their water bill, it's part of that. But the way to survive is to keep it here.
The last question he has is about snow and ice deficit. And he's asking for you to please show how the $125,000 was actually used, because it's been a mild winter. And I know you mentioned the salt.
Right.
And so...
About $100,000 every year.
$100,000 was spent on salt.
I don't know the exact number, but generally speaking, when the shed is empty, and the new shed's gonna be bigger, but when the shed's empty and I order it in the fall, it's about $100,000 worth of salt through the air.
Could you just give him, get the exact number?
Sure, I can give you the breakdown.
So you could get that to Mark?
Sure. I probably need it for town meeting anyway, so it's probably a good exercise.
And I'm so glad, I mean, I don't know if anyone's seen the salt shed, but it's really so dangerous, I'm surprised
Yeah.
that we're allowed to still keep it there. So I'm really happy we're done with it.
We are.
And it's going to be in the new salt shed, so that's fabulous. And I know we have been putting one of your employees down there to deal with some of the, at the DPW site, down there and help with the, any sort of asbestos that's still found. Is that person still included in the budget, and you've budgeted for that for the upcoming year?
I hope to be done with that type of activity, but yes, that person...
Just if necessary, you'd have some there.
Well, we have it in our schools, and so when abatement has to happen there, and different public buildings as well, we have actually two folks on staff with that training, so.
Oh, good.
We're fortunate.
I just had a couple of follow-up questions.
Sure.
You mentioned in terms of contaminants in water, the filtering that was gonna start to take place. Now, would that be in Springfield or would that be in our town?
In Springfield.
In Springfield.
It'll come into the town at Forest Glen already filtered.
Okay.
So if you believe, you know, what they showed us, two falls ago, unbelievably high rainfall totals. It created a whole lot of organics in the water at Cabo Mountain. Their filters were overwhelmed, so that many more contaminants got through, that many more contaminants came to us and everybody else who buys water from them. We started testing it like we normally do, like we're required to do, and it's over the exceedance. These letters come out, you know, it takes a while for that to run its course, you know, from the reservoir through the pipes to each home. We're finally getting to a point where we're now under the level. They know they have a weakness in their system. They're spending a bunch of money to upgrade their filtration, i.e., you saw the pass-through, our numbers went up for next year, because that's how they're paying for it.
They're charging us, yeah.
Of course.
Yeah, of course, yeah. Now, the other question is, you talked about sending cameras upstream to look for contaminants in terms of sewage, right?
Yeah, storm drain.
Storm drains, yes, storm drains, I'm sorry. And so if it was connected to a certain, like a business or some location, would then they be responsible to start to?
First, that's illegal.
Look at how things are leaving their facility.
So we make sure that, you know, we disconnect them, but certainly whatever they're adding to the system, it's an illicit discharge, and yes, they'd be on the hook for that.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mario?
How did I get so lucky that Richard and Mark are?
You might want to write some thank you notes.
I might. Thank you, guys.
So this means we're ahead of our schedule?
We are, yeah, a little bit. So next up, we have the Fire Department. We have Chief Dearborn here to answer questions you have.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
You want to tell us the highlights and changes of your budget?
Sure. So first, I want to thank Deputy Chief Mixata and Captain Rigney for joining me this evening. They're a big part of preparing the budget and keeping me in track. Captain Rigney manages all our data. We collect a lot of data. The Fire Department's, for multitude of reasons, including our grant applications, is very data-driven, so. So I first want to thank the Board for sending me questions to prepare myself. That's very helpful, and I think that's a great approach. I did answer the Board all their emails on those questions, and it seemed like there was two themes that were the biggest things that the Board was concerned about. So generally, the Fire Department is level-funded, even though we've experienced over the last five years, an over 30% increase in call volume. One thing, so over the past couple of years, we've discussed how do we battle our overtime, which is we've exceeded the last four years, and the solution really is to add people. That is not a very popular thing with the state of the economy in Long Meadow, so we need to figure out a way to fund that. So five years ago, when I became chief, we took the approach of looking at our EMS revenue and seeing how we could fix that. So first year I took over, we did about $550,000 in revenue, working closely with the Board and the Finance Director. This year, we're going to look right around, maybe a little bit north of $1 million. So one problem solves the other. This year, we're proposing to, I initially asked for four positions. We looked at what we, really what we can afford with the EMS revenue that will support two additional employees, and that includes all their benefits and insurance, which is something that, within our budget, all the benefits that are applicable to EMS services are included and paid for by the revenue stream. So it does increase the employee cost. I know when we talk about other FTEs in town, you know, we talked about the employee costs, but in the background is that, those benefit costs. We actually include those so we can pay for them out of revenue. So why do we need the two employees? Well, the amount of overtime I'm spending to try to run the operations, lower services, is simply unreasonable. The financial aspect is one. The second is I have people that I'm having to force overtime, hold people, they're coming in off-duty all the time, and it's just not a healthy work environment. You know, earning overtime is good to a certain point, and then you increase the risk of the employee. So I think that I'm very comfortable with the two employees. However, I will give you the caveat that if the revenue keeps going up, the call volume keeps going up, we are already exceeding last year's number at this point, I will probably come back and ask for an additional one or two EMS revenue-supported employees to meet the demand. So, but this year is two. So any questions, as far as, I'll talk about the employees first, and I'll get to the capital.
Actually, I have one question. So you count in their benefits, and I know Paul sent me, that includes the unfunded liability. You figure out that's another 10% for health and then 35 for pension, right?
It's about $10,005 per employee.
Okay.
That's the average per employee, with family or single, it's all mixed together.
Right.
And it's about 25% of the salary
Okay.
for the retirement.
Retirement. So where does that portion of that retirement part go? I mean, do you have a fund?
There's a line item in their budget, and it's the first line under the expense. It's called Employee Benefits. We actually charge that line item to offset what the town pays.
Okay.
So there, a portion of their budget is actually offsetting the total cost of the employee benefits.
So this is only what we're paying for the year, it's not what we project to have to pay over the lifetime of that employee. So it's not the unfunded, it's only the funded?
Right. We're not moving it forward at this point in time. I mean, we do, there's a small assessment for OPEB, but that's it. As far as retirement is concerned, the retirement has the unfunded liability built into our assessment
Right.
already, so that's taken care of by itself.
And so you do that, but do you also figure out the, I know you're talking capital later, but do you also figure out the cost of that third ambulance and replacing all three, because now you're talking about three ambulances?
So I think Mr. Perserzik talked to you about restructuring the EMS revenue account of what we call the leftover money after the budget. So we actually, like my capital plan for the fire trucks, we separate EMS equipment out, and we talk about EMS, we talk about the ambulances, cardiac monitors, and now stretcher systems, because those are all extremely expensive pieces of equipment. And we actually have a 25-year capital plan. Everything's scheduled out for all that equipment, because it's very predictable, and what we need to actually set aside each year to keep the system sustainable. Right now, we're doing fine. We're putting, we're making enough revenue to cover 30-something percent, Paul, 20, 29% of the budget?
I don't have the calculation.
Yeah.
It was up there in the prior years. I don't have it for the current year.
Right. So we're actually, we're applying money to the operating budget and still setting aside money to meet the capital demand, so for ambulance replacements, cardiac monitors, stretcher systems, and the whatnot. So, and there's several other things within the operating budget, EMS supplies, training, certain services, softwares, things like that, they're all covered. EMS is really 100% covered from an operating perspective. So, and it also offsets the, some of the costs for fire suppression or firefighting in your community. You know, if you really looked at, if you got rid of EMS, but you still have to have a fire department, you're not really gonna reduce staffing by that much, because your insurance ratings would go through the roof. So it's really offsetting that cost of providing two side-by-side services. So it's very efficient.
Chief, I could just interject. The budget for FY '21 is recommended at 2.6 million, of which basically a little over a million would be coming from the ambulance revenue. So it's not, you know, we're up in the 40% range.
And it's climbed. We've been trying to apply more of the EMS money towards to offset the cost, basically the cost to operate the Fire Department EMS every year. So we're trying to do our part for that tax ceiling.
Just one follow-up question on that is, so if you're now going up to three ambulances, is this, the third ambulance, a new one? That's what?
Yeah, listen, I think I need to clear that up. I thought, so back in May 20th of 2019, I sat before the Board, and we did my EMS rates, and I actually went back and looked at the tape today. I thought I really covered it, but let me, if I could have the opportunity to cover how we operate that
Okay.
again. Because I think some folks probably, I was probably too long-winded that night. So when we replaced our current, we'll say Medic 2, we had a third ambulance that was outdated, all right? But it was still passing the OEMS inspection. So I approached the town manager, and the officer, the people who inspect our ambulances, that license them. I said, "Is there any chance I can hold on to this ambulance?" Because at that time, we saw our call volumes increasing, increasing, increasing. We were operating both ambulances at the same time. We, I don't know if you remember, but we had, one of our ambulances basically blew the motor. It was out of service for a long time. We looked at what we lost in revenue during that time by only now being back to one ambulance, and it was very substantial. So we discussed that, the cost of actually maintaining that third ambulance, because it's already equipped, it's already paid for, is very low. It basically has to do, I think it's 16 calls a year. Basically pays for licensing, maintenance, and the insurance on the truck. So we looked at that, we said, "Let's give that a shot." Well, as we were trying to experiment, just really use as a mechanical backup, our call volume continued to increase, continued to increase. Well, we're actually now deploying that sometimes because we have to. And the reason we have to is, we'll send both ambulances out. On the third call, we actually request mutual aid. So we'll call someone like the Agawam Fire Department or the private services. I will tell you that the private services are rarely, if ever, available. We always had mutual aid agreements with them. We'll use East Long Meadow for that third call, whoever's available. But the system is strained in the region right now. Everybody's seen these huge increases in calls. Every fire department in the area last year set new records for call volume. So mutual aid is not always available. What we'll do at that point is basically strip the town, because we have to service that person with the ambulance. So I think, Tom, you expressed that one day you passed all three ambulances, you know, running down, running down the street, and that was true. Now, that day, we had, it was at a shift change, it was a call, but yesterday, actually, when I was responding to your email, in between 1:00 and 2:30, we had six EMS calls. All right, we deployed all of our equipment and called mutual aid. And this evening, while we were on our way in here, we had three or four calls, or four calls all at the same time. So it happens, and I wish we could schedule EMS calls and schedule fires. It'd be much more efficient, but unfortunately, we just can't do that. So the deployment of the third ambulance is really, it's a back, it's still a backup, but there's times when we need it, and we're seeing that. So, and the capital plan this year, so the ambulance is actually not in this fiscal year. It's fiscal '22. The federal grant guidance for the Assistance Firefighter Grant came out, and increasing ambulances to advance life support is a high priority. So we have the opportunity to, for approximately $120,000 federal grant, to basically outfit a new ambulance. We have the money sitting in the EMS account right now where we can afford to buy this ambulance, and it's basically accelerated by six months with $125,000. Now, I put in my capital plan, I'd like to try this now, and I need to go through this process, but if for some reason I'm unsuccessful with a grant, I'll rescind the proposal, we'll sit on this for another year, and it'll be my FY '22 capital. So that's what I'm looking for. The purchase actually won't be till the fall, but in the past, I know I've come to the Board, town meeting, at fall town meeting with proposals for, and I know that there's not a comfort level that, that I should go through the capital process in this, so that's actually what we're trying to do. It's a little bit odd, but it's two processes trying to line up, so. Does that make sense? Hope I explained it better this time.
No, I think so. And that was a word of interest question, so thank you. Tom?
Yeah, well, again, as we look at the demographics and being an age-friendly community, you know, this is a time where we might, we're gonna need three, maybe four, but then, you know, 10 years from now, we may not, you know.
Yeah, you know, so I want to say that we're not chasing business. We actually have programs going in the background to reduce call volume, all right? We've worked with a large housing facility in town here, where they are actually contracting basically home visits, where they call an ambulance before, and now they have people come in and actually can do some treatments at home, can give an IV, can give medications. So that's reduced our call volume at deficit by 20%, all right? We're looking at community paramedicine. If the insurance companies would actually come out and with a formula where we could actually bill for those services and make them so they're real services, that's on the Affordable Care Act, that would again reduce our services, where I might be sending one paramedic out in the car to do home services. So there's things that we're working on in the background. To run four ambulances, you know, and we might be making a lot of money, is it really, is, you know, is that where we want to be? It's not. You know, we need to somehow stem this tide a little bit. With the nursing home, we don't do all of their calls out of there anymore. We only do the Priority One calls. We are the service zone provider, but we can make agreements. So things that are low priority, that may not even be going to the emergency room, we don't do those calls for them. They use their private ambulance. Some calls where they wait 15, 20 minutes up to 45 minutes for an ambulance, so. But there's facilities that are increasing our calls. The new clinic on Bliss Road, that, our call volume out of there is basically one or two times a day. 21 Dwight Road, one or two times a day.
Wow.
All right, and as we add those facilities, now, Brad, it's revenue, but does add service volume. As you look at different types of housing in the town, those do have big impacts on my operation, so they're all considerations, so.
All right, and we're gonna have a new nursing home opening up, you know, right on the door.
Yeah, that's actually in East Long Meadow, that's our responsibility.
Yeah, but they'll probably be calling us.
Well, we do share services.
Yeah. Now, the budget didn't, it only made one mention about Westcom's impact to $200, $3,000 or something.
Yep.
But is there another place where?
So this budget actually isn't funded through my departments, funded through the Police Department.
Okay, so, okay, so that's it.
Yep, so I did put in money there, because we actually needed liaison, technical liaison, because we, under emergency management and under the Fire Department, we maintain the communication structure, so the Deputy Chief is assigned to that, so that's actually part of his stipend, so.
Okay, and so...
And I want to give him a lot of credit for the work he's done, as he's been tirelessly working on this transition, so.
Oh, good. All right. The other thing is, because, excuse me, it's not coronavirus, but the special overtime budget is still at $230,000, and will that be reduced if you hire these full-time people?
So that's a great question, Tom. We had a lot of talk about, discussion about that. So even though I'm getting employees, it takes a while to get these employees up to speed. It takes six months, eight months to get them through the Fire Academy. Unfortunately, because there are multiple factors, and it's probably a discussion for another day, we have a great deal of difficulty recruiting, and we do have some retainage issues in the Fire Department and other departments in town. So I don't get, you know, I'm not stealing from other fire departments, fully trained people. I'm really getting green people. I mean, I have openings now, I've just advertised, I get two qualified people to apply. You know, there's a whole host of reasons for that, but, so we're getting green people, it takes a while. You know, if I can get to the staffing levels that everybody's trained and functional, that overtime number's gonna drop considerably.
Okay, so for this budget, you're still would stay at that level, then?
Hopefully.
Unless Paul twists your arm, I guess. Okay, that's the only thing I had.
Any other questions? You mentioned something about wanting to get reimbursed for some of the services that you're doing, are you, that you aren't currently being reimbursed for. Are you putting together a legislation or something?
Nope, that's actually, so it's actually a federal regulation that the insurance companies haven't taken on yet. It's called Community Paramedicine or Mobile Integrated Healthcare. And the insurance companies just simply have not created... And the insurance company just simply have not created, it's political quagmire. So the legislation is there. We don't offer the services now. We'd like to offer the services. It's more efficient. It's better for the healthcare system, but it's just tied up in the quagmire of the healthcare system right now. So a few pilots days have been run, they've been successful, then they go away, so.
And you're not going to be fighting over the same pool of people? Cause I guess East Long Meadow's putting in another ambulance, I heard.
We are fighting over the same pool of people.
Yeah, but are you worried about the third ambulance being not needed as more and more other communities start getting more ambulances?
We're not changing our, we have the third ambulance now. We've had it for 18 months. We're not changing our operations. We're just basically replacing an ambulance that's 2006, 130,000 miles on it, and we're able to upgrade to an ALS level ambulance with $125,000 federal grant, so.
Yeah, but you, you feel you'll always need that third ambulance, even if other communities are backfilling?
Yeah, basically, I mean, we use more mutual aid than we take in. All right? We need to decrease that number because every piece, every time we farm some out of mutual aid, we're losing revenue.
Yeah.
So we're still doing a call. We're still sending a fire truck or a car there, but we're just, we lose out on the revenue, so.
Let me take a quick look at Mark. I think we might have asked all those. Yeah, go ahead.
So this, this question might be for Leonard or Paul, but what do we do with, I guess it would be surplus property? So that ambulance that we're getting rid of, do we, does Chad put on a website to sell it, or?
Yeah. Chapter 30B is not only for purchases, it's for disposition. So we have to follow the procurement laws and that. Usually he, he'll put it on, he might put it on eBay or some other type of auction service.
And that sales money gets dropped in the general fund?
In the general fund.
So I'll give you an example. The trade-in value offer on it was $4,500, so.
Not much.
Not much. It made more than that since we kept it. Several times more. One ambulance called the average collection on it, it's about $670. So doesn't take much to add that up.
I don't quite understand this next question, so I'll.
Just ask it.
I will just read it? Okay. On capital, we should not be purchasing a third ambulance. We already retired the second ambulance when we bought the last one. At least the justification for the new ambulance at that time was old and unreliable. Well, I know it's still old and unreliable, but it should have been removed from service. And the fact that they kept it and continued to use it even as a backup tells me it wasn't so bad to justify replacing the third ambulance because it's old and reliable. If they do that, who's to say they don't keep this old one as a fourth ambulance and play the same game? In two or three years, we need more people. We need another ambulance.
Okay. So I will tell you.
You understood that?
I do, do. And I'll preface it with that. I've never played games with the board. I've always been completely forthcoming. May 20th, 2019, I sat before the board, explained how we're gonna operate and why we're keeping the third ambulance. You know, I know you folks talk about the tele-tape and, you know, and I, and I expressed the need, expressed the need again when I wrote my capital plan for this year. It's very detailed. My November 2019 report, I, my very first item on that, which is an entire paragraph, explains why we have three ambulances and the grant program that I'm pursuing. So this is not, I'm not playing a game here. This is, I'm operating a fire department. I'm trying to provide the very best service I can to community of 16,000. I'll go back to Tom's point of our population type. 21% of our population is over 65 years old, lives at home independently. Those are our clients. Those are the people I need to service. That's a big number compared to all of our neighbors. That's driving our services, so.
And I have one last question for me. You mentioned before that, and I'm not sure it was in passing, that some federal grants for fire suppression and everything have been pulled back from you and moved by the executive branch into other areas. Are you having, are you worried about some of the grants you usually depend on this year, or?
So the, the assistance firefighter grant this past year was delayed six months, which was hurtful. It made us kind of struggle. That was to actually replace personal protective equipment because of the budget issues in Washington. Right now, the grants are being released on time. But if there's a government shutdown, impasses it with the federal budget, will be delayed again. So, you know, those are the challenges with grants. We do use our capital plan as our guide for submitting our federal grants. And if you ever look at my capital plan, you'll see how many items that are in my 25-year capital plan that we basically just cross out. Supply with federal grants, supply with federal grants, supply with federal grants.
Yeah, you're very successful in getting the grants. I just was worried when you said that there's problems that you've had this year, and are you expecting them on the horizon, but you can't be sure?
It's Washington politics, Marie.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And you'll let us know if things are really starting to hurt in regards to your expectations of grant, federal grants. And thank you for the work you've done this year on regional dispatch. I know the amount of work that your both departments put in was huge this year. And that was like double time that you just did work on your own to make this happen. So thank you very much. It really makes a difference in the budget and the quality of work. Been very successful because everyone seems to want to jump on now, right? A lot of towns doing it, so it was worth it.
Sometimes you gotta be careful what you wish for.
You built it and they will come. Any other questions for the chief?
No, thanks, chief.
Thank you, and thank you for coming and your work. Thank you.
Okay. And next, next up, we have the police department. I have noted next to this on the agenda that myself and Paul Besterzic will be available to answer questions as well because tonight, you see you have Captain Fontaine here. He's serving as interim police chief while we look for a permanent replacement. And Captain Fontaine came in as Chief Stengel submitted the budget to myself and Paul. So he's, he's here. He can answer questions about the department itself, but if there's specific budgetary ones, Paul and I are available to answer those as well.
Good evening.
Andy, thank you for coming. I guess I'll start with, again, thank you for the regional dispatch and all the work that you've done on it. How do you think it's working out?
It's been bumpy, but we're smoothing it out. I think it's progressing nicely and it's nice to see that other departments are willing to come.
And is there any changes that occurred in the functioning or operations of the budget this year that you're especially proud of?
Our training budget, I know, has increased. We have four people currently in the Western Mass Academy right now. We're short some bodies and the unexpected with the chief retiring is another position that will need to be filled and another body that's lost, so.
And how's the training coming? Did we increase training this year?
Right. We increased it. It was 36,000 and we increased it to 42. So that would take care of, I forget what it's cost for, like 4,500 or something.
For the officers with the attendants, 3,000. Then their equipment is another 2,000.
Yeah, we have a tendency of training people so well, other departments steal them, right? They move on.
We've had our issues with retention, yes.
Yeah. And we, how many new officers are you looking for? And how many did we just get this year?
So we have four, but we've now fallen again behind. We're gonna have to have another test and hire, we're supposed to be budgeted for 19 patrolmen and we're currently at 15. But we have another retirement, April 1st, Sergeant Fullerton, which will be another vacancy that needs to be filled. And then I'm shortly thereafter in September. And I believe there's another officer that has submitted his year notice for retirement as well. So it's an ongoing process.
Yeah, sounds like it. And how's the police dog doing? No retirement for him, right?
Not yet.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I guess I'm just looking at the, there's a police, a new vehicle replacement? Is that what I saw?
There is always a request, and it's for two new vehicles. I think the price tag of it just went up. So the, the budget went from 80 to 83,000 based upon the sticker price, but it's for two vehicles. And that's a common thing every year, that we're replacing at least two, if not three vehicles.
Okay, all right. And then I guess the only other thing is in terms of the dispatch, you know, we, we looked at, there's, they cut, you cut from the budget, right? 129,000 plus.
We completely cut all the dispatchers out. And there's a new line item for Westcom assessment. But the dispatchers had been budgeted prior over $200,000. And FY this, this year, we made a transfer out of the dispatcher's budget to pay the Westcom assessment. And like I said, in FY '21, it's completely out with, and then we're adding the Westcom assessment next year is estimated at 155,000. So we basically went from over $200,000 of straight salary costs down to 155.
Right. And then out of that 150, in addition, there's a couple of line items I see of like $3,000 from, and $5,000 from other, I don't know if it's from the.
There's a $3,000 increase for uniforms and expenses?
It says Westcom impact, oh, there's 3,000 decrease on the fire department. And then there was another Westcom decrease. Maybe it was, I'll see the other one. But, so there, so besides that assessment, they showed at least two other deductions from that 155 figure that I saw. But you're not sure about what they are?
I'm not, I, the 155 is there, so I know there's a reduction in the fire department. And that was for communications, I recall?
Yeah, communication maintenance.
Okay.
Right.
Oh, 3,500?
Right, the fire department. And then we completely eliminated the dispatcher's line item in the police department.
Okay. So, I mean, but overall, it's a, it's a much better deal for us. We're getting better, you know, everything's consolidated. Now, and the offset, the reason it's almost $100,000 less is because we now get money from 911 calls from telephone users who, you know, they get billed that automatically. And now it goes through Westcom.
Right. We don't get the money. It's really paying for.
We don't get it, but it reduces our.
Paying for some of the operational costs at Westcom. They reimburse about 75% of the budget. So our assessment and the other participating communities cover the other 25%. So, but yeah, that's where most of that comes from. But it doesn't come to us directly. It goes to, again, we benefit it indirectly.
Oh, yeah. And, you know, cause there's, there's people who look at the budget or look at the decisions we made to be involved in Westcom when it was just us and, I think it was us and Chicken Pea, you know, getting 75% reimbursement and getting money that's charged to customers of telephones who use 911 services. I mean, that was, we had the courage to go on, you know, and I know the previous chief was a big part of that, is it was the fire chief. And other towns backed out. And now it's nice to see that they're starting to turn the corner. Well, you know, the numbers don't lie. Nothing, even Socrates, when he was in trouble, he'd always bring out the numbers. Say, well, let's look at the numbers. So this is, you know, so this is a good budget. You know, it looks pretty good. Pretty happy. I don't know. Anyone else has any questions?
No questions.
And so there's two more police cars that are on the capital, did you just say?
No, they're not in the capital. We always budget the police vehicles in the operating budget. And we, we normally budget two replacements every year.
And the reason we got, we got off balance a couple of years, and that's why we had a few in the fall?
Right. You may potentially, there might, something might happen to a vehicle unexpectedly. You know, the vehicles only last, you have their front-line stuff three, four years. So you might, again, you may also get a lemon somewhere in there. Certain other things may happen that you have to get into that third vehicle periodically.
Yeah.
But historically, it's been about two over the last couple of years.
And so how many police cars do we have actively now?
I believe there's 10.
10?
10, yes.
And when we have, and how many in a shift? How many officers?
A day shift you could have between the supervisors, the one, two, about six in operation at one time.
Six in operation. And the reason we have 10?
The detective bureau has their own. Then you have your line cars for the most part. Supervisor's vehicle, chief's vehicle. The older vehicles we use for training, for travel, back and forth. That pretty much sums it up.
And so the oldest vehicle we have in use right now, how many years?
Crown Vic, I think is.
You have a Crown Vic still?
We still do. It's Lieutenant Stock's favorite vehicle. I'm not even sure what year that is. It's probably like a 2000.
It's probably his birth year, and that's why he likes it.
True.
Okay. Any other questions for, all right, thank you.
Is that Crown Vic rear wheel drive?
Yes, it is.
I'm sure it is.
Thank you for your first time on the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Can I go back to Chief Dearborn? There was one other question I forgot to ask you. Yes. Oh, yeah, I don't know. But I was supposed to ask you about the vehicle that you're purchasing. It's a backup vehicle, 50?
The, the, the car two.
Oh, car two.
Yeah, we're replacing, geez, I mean, that has been on the radar, to be honest with you, Marie. Yes, we're replacing a, replacing one of the utility vehicles. What year is that one? 2000? So we're replacing an '06 Expedition. How many miles are on it? Just say the name.
1,000.
1,000. It's in the parking lot, if you like to look at it. It's rotted out. And yeah, we're, we're changing it over to an F-150 pickup truck with a cap on it. We don't have a pickup in the fire department right now. So there's a couple of reasons why we want to switch to a pickup, basically for utility purposes. Where right now, if we have a fire or moving all kinds of things, we, we have to borrow one from DPW. Off-hours, that's, takes, you know, we could spend an hour just trying to get a vehicle. So by trying to combine uses with this type of vehicle. Also with the cancer prevention for firefighters now, one of the things when they fight either structural fire, cardiovascular, anything where they get exposed, the recommend, the way we treat the gear and the OSHA recommendation is that gear actually gets stripped down at the scene. It's bagged. We're not supposed to put it in a cab of the fire truck. Our compartments on our trucks are pretty full, so actually having the pickup to be able to haul that gear back. The same thing, you know, when we're coming up through, we throw all the dirty equipment right in the cab of the truck, we ride home with it. The recommendations for that are absolutely against that now. So this vehicle's shot. And so we're trying to replace it with a multipurpose vehicle that will meet, create some safety advantages for the department, be more usable, so.
And following up on that cancer issue, you got a new washer and dryer, or just only the washer?
No, we've got the washer, the dryer. We get the federal grant this year for $54,000. All of our firefighters now have two sets of NFPA compliant gear. We did ventilation work in the department, duct cleaning, filtration systems, all through, mainly offset through grants. We're actually a model in the area with, in both our policies and procedures and the way we've, with our equipment and the way our station is right now. We still have a little bit of work to do and we're working with facilities on that as far as the station goes. But we're in pretty good shape there. And hopefully it's effective in reducing cancer. As you well know, that we had a captain who passed away this past year from cancer and then one of our other captains has had cancer also. So both relate directly to their fire service, so.
Well, thank you for putting those programs and equipment together.
Yep. And that's a lot to my staff, too. They, they work really hard on it.
Thank you. All right. Thanks for coming back. And I'm glad I did ask.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the department heads you wanted to bring up back up or anything?
There's another question I had for Barry that I realized. So, do they?
No, you better come up to the microphone so the residents can hear.
I guess, there's two of them. One is the, the girls lacrosse, is that what's gonna take, gonna take over the, all the center of town?
Are you talking about the jamboree? Jamboree?
The jamboree, yeah. That's lacrosse jamboree.
It is. Normally it's held at the Wolf Swamp Fields, but because we're closing those fields, they apply to relocate.
And so, you know, we talked about it once. I know it's come back. I don't think you guys have voted on that yet.
It's coming back March 16th.
So next, okay. So, I mean, I think it's a great idea. I, I think they're gonna love those fields. And one concern that Mark had was about any damage they might do to the field or cleanup and all that stuff. And I, we were pretty much reassured that they take care of all the cleanup, the jamboree. cleanup, the jamboree folks, right?
They do, so, to address the damage, there isn't anticipated damage that this event causes, we've ran it for at least the last fourteen years, and, I mean, it's normal, normal use of the facility, and they are very good ambassadors for the space, so, they do, they do their own trash pickup, they have dozens of volunteers.
And so, this use of this fields will probably be the next, next year also, it'll be two years, because Wolf Swamp won't be completed.
Possibly, yes.
And I think it's got some advantages to our business district, because people will be closer to restaurants, and the big wine and everything, so that's a good thing. But I wonder, after two years of those fields, will they even give us a hard time about going back to Wolf Swamp?
Wanna go on brand-new fields? I don't think we'll have to twist their arm.
Okay.
I think they'll be very happy to go.
And the other thing is, the Bliss Park, they're going to, you're gonna refurbish the tennis courts there, is that in the plan for this budget?
The tennis courts, I don't believe need refurbishing, that's a regular annual maintenance.
That's not yours, that's Mario's. Okay.
So, every year, when we start up the tennis courts.
Yeah.
Starting back, well, before I got here, we hired a service to come in, and they're hard to get, they're one of the only ones around, and the bigger facilities get them first, 'cause they make more money there. So usually, like around June or July, we open them up. One of my employees learned how to do that, and for the last three or four years, he did that for us, he retired. Sadly, he gave us the notes on how to do that, but nobody else was willing to learn, so now we're gonna hire the service again. It's like seven or eight thousand dollars for that. They put in new lines, they condition the clay, and then they're opened up, but the sad part about that is, I don't know that, we'll get, we're gonna get them open in May.
No, we're in the queue, but typically, like Mario said, we have to get behind the country clubs, and everyone else.
Yeah, okay, well, this year, the weather, the weather shouldn't, there shouldn't have too much water, they weren't showing water log. But then you're not, the budget, I must have read this wrong then, that you're not gonna read, there's not a big refurbishment, a thousand dollars is nothing, I thought it was like.
What was the number you said? Sorry?
Well, I saw a thing for four thousand eight hundred dollars.
That sounds like startup.
Yeah.
Regular startup.
I think that's even a little light for that, but that's, that could be, the startup, that's what I just described.
Oh, that's what it is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, so we used to save money on that when we had our own person.
Right.
Okay, and you have statistics, how many people actually use those courts? I mean, are they, you know?
Somewhere.
We don't keep metrics, because we don't staff them, and so any facility that we don't have a ranger or staff, even the hard courts, we don't have, I mean, we know that we run programs, other programs in different sections of the park, and we do have the pools open, and they are used on a daily basis.
Right, 'cause I know, in Springfield with the tennis, with their clay courts, they have like a club that.
They do.
There's a fee that people pay to sort of maintain them, because it is a higher-priced item to keep online, but for people who are older, like myself, it's easier on your knees, so it's a big plus to have clay courts, that's for sure. But is, do you think there's any chance in the future there would be a club developing around the clay courts, or?
I think anytime we get into programming such as that, we would have to have monitoring, and monitoring cost money. We did, we piloted that at the Blend Tennis Courts, just prior to when we renovated them, and we found, we did it for a season, a spring season, a summer, and a fall, and it actually cost us more to have the staff person there, and residents expressed an interest in not paying for those services. They would rather have them.
There might be an opportunity with sponsorship. I know there's some talk about changing the bylaw there, so.
Okay, yeah.
Not just at that court, I just mean, in a lot of our facilities, so.
Yeah, well, that's a good idea, okay. That's it, thanks, I, those are the last things I had on my list, thank you.
Come on, let's go.
Quickly, before we think of something else, is there anything else you wanted to present tonight?
No, I, we have, you have the budget forum on Wednesday night. I've asked the departments to be available to attend if you have further questions.
Okay.
But if you.
Now, the budget forum's at seven-thirty, is that when you're gonna ask them to come?
Yes.
Okay.
So, what is, what is the purpose of Wednesday night? What are we?
Well, we, meeting with, finance committee is coming, a joint meeting before the budget forum, every year we have to have a budget forum, and we often have, no one show up, maybe one or two people have been known to come, so it shouldn't be a long evening.
So it's for the public?
It's for the public, to have, ask their questions, and you're gonna have the, some of the department heads here if they have questions on it, so, it should be a short evening, but we will start at seven.
Yes.
With the finance committee, and then maybe the finance committee will stay and have some questions, too.
Mm-hmm, okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, good night.